But yeah, where is she? Yeah.
I've got to answer my question.
I'd like to call to order the Morrisville Borough Council Special Meeting to set the agenda for February 18th, 2020. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Councilor Parker?
Here.
Councilor Paul?
Here.
Councilor Robinson?
Here.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Here.
Here. Okay. Move on to four, which is announcements and presentations. Four A. Oh, yeah, sorry.
If I may just, there will be, the council will hold a brief executive session following the close of tonight's meeting to discuss legal matters.
All right. Back to announcements. Four A was a presentation by the Morrisville Little League. They've postponed that to March.
Yes, they will be presenting at your March Agenda Meeting.
And four B would be the Borough Engineer Comprehensive Grant Program.
Yes, this is the annual presentation from the Borough Engineers' Office. For those of you who don't know Elora Das, she's with Gilmore &amp; Associates. And if you don't know Kurt Schroeder, he's the Borough Engineer.
Sasan? Hello?
You can actually pull it out if you'd rather hold it, or if you want to leave it where it is, that's fine.
As long as you guys can hear me. Just let me know. Welcome, everyone. As Scott just announced, my name's Elora Das, and I'm here with Kurt Schroeder with Gilmore &amp; Associates. And we're here to talk about 2019's grants and what 2020 brings for Morrisville. So in 2019, we can kind of break down the borough's funds into three categories. 53% into grant funding in liquid fuels, 42% borough funds out of pocket, and 5% land development and other reimbursables. If we're just looking at the borough funds out of pocket, we can subcategorize into four groups. And we can look at grant applications as 27%, general engineering as 39%, and design and bid grant-funded construction projects 24%, and our MS4, 10%. And if you're not familiar with what MS4 stands for, it's Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. It's basically our storm water management for the borough. And this is basically mandated through PADAP, Department Environmental Protection. And we have annual reporting that the borough is like basically required to do. So just looking at these four categories, grant applications in 2019, we submitted 13 applications, about the same as last year, or 2018. And our fee was approximately $3,800 per application to submit. So that's down probably about two grand from the year before, mostly because we've resubmitted a lot of applications. So today, out of those 13 applications, we've been awarded four. Seven are pending, and two were declined, the CDBG projects that we did not get. General engineering, breakdown residential correspondence, engineering reporting and management, road opening permits, miscellaneous public improvements, general correspondence and communication. Design and bid grant-funded construction projects, basically any funding that we've gotten through a grant, and it doesn't cover our soft costs for doing the design and bidding, basically that's what that is for. So example, like Patriots Park, we have funded 85% through the grant, but the borough is required to do a 15% match, so that covers some of that cost, as well as like our paving projects that we do every year. MS4, I kind of briefly just kind of spoke about before what that stands for, and that's just the annual reporting that we have. Feel free to stop me with any questions, too.
I have a question. So you submitted 13 applications with an average fee of $3,800, so it was a cost to the borough of $49,000?
Yes. We'll look in, you know, the payoff for that money at later slides.
Well, but only four were awarded, right? Seven are pending, so there's a possibility that that's just some costs?
Possibility, yeah. So looking at grants in general, prior to 2019, these are the list of grants that we've obtained. So for the West Bridge Street pedestrian bridge crossing along the DNL Canal, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that project, but it's basically a connection to cross Bridge Street and have two ramps going up to that to be able to continue the trail. So that's in progress. Another project that we were funded is the Melvin Avenue Basin retrofit, and we obtained $187,992, but that wasn't enough to cover the construction costs, so we've applied for additional funding to cover the full amount so that the borough would not have to pay out anything out of pocket. Again, this project is like a mandated project, so it's, you know, a good result that they've already obtained grant funding. The next one is Patriots Park at Historic Summer Seat. You're probably familiar with the sidewalk and ADA ramps that surround Summer Seat that had been completed last year, but this is for the interior of that and actually building a nice passive park for the community. So that grant covers design costs for developing that park. Another grant is the DCNR Williamson Park Master Plan. This is a 50-50 grant, so the borough is required to match 50%. This is for like a design plan for the development, redevelopment of Williamson Park, that entire parcel. The Arlie grant is for updating all of your stop signs, yield signs, that kind of thing. So we'll be working with Public Works to replace those and update those. And then the Walk Works is the active transportation plan that was developed last year, and some of you guys were on the committee and helped along, and you may have seen the group at some events, too, and participated. But that plan is actually up on Morrisville Borough's website. So in 2019, we were awarded four grants so far. This is actually only four grants, but more funding than the previous year was received. So in total, I think it was about $700 and some thousand dollars that we received last year, the biggest one being CDBG, $325,000, with no match to the borough. And that was for the sidewalks and curb ramps around Historic Summer Seat. The next one is for the Flood Protection Study and Levy Accreditation Phase Two, so that was another big win for the borough, $255,000. This one does have a match of 15%, so $45,000 the borough would be obligated to pitch in. But this is the continuation of that levy accreditation process, so another big project for the borough that I know they're anxious to get completed. The next one is the Keystone Grant for Morrisville Borough's roof, library roof replacement. We were granted $52,500, and we're going to try to get CDBG funding for the match of this project so that the borough will not have to pay anything out of pocket. So hopefully this year we'll be able to get that funding, which we've got pretty good work well with CDBG. The next grant is for curb ramps. So as we're paving all of these roadways in Morrisville Borough, you're obligated to upgrade all the curb ramps that the paving touches. So example, right out here, we have Union and Washington Street, and there's two ramps that cross here, so those need to be updated. So we will be using this funding to update those curb ramps, as well as some of the other ones for this year's paving and any other ones that may need to be replaced.
What is the cost for each curb ramp? Off the top of your head, do you know?
So prices have been going up and up.
Well, that's anything in life goes up.
Right.
Like $5,000, $7,000, $10,000?
So anywhere between like $4,500 and $6,000 is kind of roughly what we've been seeing.
Is that per ramp or per intersection?
Per ramp.
Per ramp?
Yes.
So you, it would theoretically be, could be $20,000 for a normal intersection?
Right.
Okay.
Is that just for construction, or is that for engineering design as well?
That is just construction, so we're looking at like $7,500 with engineering. So this is our list of pending grants from 2019, and the majority of these are basically in relation to traffic signal upgrades. So most of these were recycled, and Arlie, those first three, there's no match required. So those are, you know, great grants to go after. No match from the borough will be required, so hopefully we get, you know, good results in the near future with getting one of these grants. As you can see, they vary from like $150,000 to like $426,000. The next two are also kind of in the same relation to like traffic control and pedestrian upgrades, so West Bridge Street accessibility improvements to kind of complete that sidewalk that's missing along that side of West Bridge Street. And the other one is for Pennsylvania and Tretin Ave, the traffic and pedestrian improvements, so for traffic signals, curb ramps, that kind of thing. The last two are for Melvin Ave Basin retrofit. Again, that's the mandated project through PADP, and we applied for both of these grants just to better our odds, since we've already had all the language and cost estimates and everything. It was, you know, cost savings to just apply for both and hope for like one of those grants so that we can complete this project. So projects that were completed in 2019, some of you may have been at the grand opening for the Williamson Park Tot Lot last spring. That was completed with a nice fall safety surface for the children. The next one is the Historic Summer Seat Accessibility Improvements. Both Phases One and Two are completed, so we completed Phase One in the spring and Phase Two last fall. The next project that was completed is Phase One of the Levy Study. So again, the preliminary stages of the Levy Accreditation was completed. So then, again, road paving. We designed bid and had completed the paving of Union Street, Washington, Washington Street, Delmore Ave, and East Philadelphia Ave. And then we've been working on the preliminary design for Patriots Park at Historic Summer Seat. That's been ongoing, but we're getting to a good point where we'll be able to submit for stormwater permits in the near future. The next project is the Walk Works Grant, the Active Transportation Plan, which kind of gives us an overview of what projects could be out there that the borough might want to go after, a trail connection, some sidewalks, signage. The list can go on and on from that. So hopefully we can utilize that active transportation plan for future projects. And then the last bullet is just telling you how many grants we have applied for, how many we won, and how many are pending. So these next couple of slides are just some photos of the projects that were complete, just a general picture of Williamson Park Tot Lot, a picture of Historic Summer Seat, some of the curb ramps crosswalks, the schematic for Patriots Park Concept Plan. And then looking at 2019 grants in summary. So for every dollar that we spent, the return was approximately $4, and this is not including the pending projects that could, you know, the borough could obtain. So I kind of left some numbers down there for you guys to review, but the Keystone Grant match is the $52,500 that we're looking at for CDBG, and we probably have a pretty good chance of getting that. So counting that into the number, we're looking at like an eight and a half dollar return investment. So I just wanted to kind of add that in there since.
Per dollar invested?
Yes. So what are we looking for this year, then, in 2020? So for CDBG, since this grant has been successful for the borough, we're looking at applying for the matching for the library roof replacement. We're looking at a playground and parking lot for Mainor Park, and we're looking at to continue on ADA ramps. The next bullet is for Patriots Park at Historic Summer Street, the construction of the actual park. We're probably going to look at phasing this out, since it may be hard to get, you know, a big construction grant. So we're going to look at the idea of doing maybe just the parking lot, maybe just the upper half of the park, lower half of the park. That's still kind of in progress, but that's something that we're looking at.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Back to the, with the Levy Accredi, the Flood Study and the Levy Accredited, how far along are we with that, with the Levy?
So we've completed the first phase, which was the H&amp;H Study that Kim Dunn at T&amp;M Associates conducted. We've done preliminary geotech work, we've done a full survey. We've still got a while to go, because.
What's a while?
Probably a couple of years to go.
Couple of years.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of construction that's going to be involved with the Levy Accreditation, so they won't actually accredit it until things have been approved. So we can do like, what was it called? Yeah, like a provisional acceptance of like our design plans, but until everything has been built and they have as-built plans and everything's been, you know, installed accordingly, then they will ultimately accredit the levy. So it's going to be a work in progress.
Hello, just on that topic, potential spillway and pumping station. We're not talking a small project of, you know, $50,000. This is going to be a multi or tens of millions of dollars, correct?
Yes, once we get further down the line in this study and design, we can put a number on that. But yeah, initially, we were coming up with some pretty big numbers, but that's kind of based upon like, you know, results that we haven't really got into.
Is that on the borough?
So we would apply for grant funding to, yeah. The next bullet is for traffic signal upgrades and replacements. That's the signage that we'll work with Public Works. Sidewalk connections and ADA ramps. We're always going to look into that Walk Works Transportation Plan, and there's missing sidewalks, and we know that this community likes to walk and is a walking community for school students. And then the Borough Hall renovations, we're trying to look into a grant to be able to do that as well.
Is there any kind of plan for the Borough Hall renovations? Is there any concept plan, or what exactly renovations are we looking into?
We don't have a concept plan yet. We're waiting on getting the, what is it, the bill for RICP. Basically, we have Senator Santa Sara's office kind of assisting us with getting that number, the costs on the bill list, and then once we have that approved, we can apply for like a grant funding for that. And then we'll get into more detailed what the borough needs, but.
So essentially, it's just based on the fact that the building was built in, what, the 50s?
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to need some updates?
Right.
Starting with the roof.
Yeah. So depending on how much funding we get, basically, we'll prioritize what the borough needs and go from there. So this next slide is just basically a summary of grants we've applied for in the past and kind of grants that we know that we can be successful in, and kind of like the breakdown of if there's a match or not a match. So CDBG, that's, you know, always a great grant to go after since there's no borough match. DCED only has a 15% borough match. DCNR match, that was the Williamson Park Master Plan, that was a 50-50, so not as great, but, you know, still opportunities there. Arlie, that has no borough match. PennDOT MTF has a 30% match. Greenlight Go has a 20% borough match. And there's always other grants that pop up that, you know, we can look into to help alleviate the borough's costs, basically.
What would be the, what's the, would you say would be a ballpark figure for the Greenlight Go? Like, what would that, what would our 20% match be? Like, what would the, what would 80% of the grant cover? And would, is that in the, in the plan for this year for Bridge End, or for Pennsylvania and Philadelphia and Philadelphia, Pennsylvania and Tretin?
We're still pending results on some of those Arlie grants that we've applied for, so it depends on what is received, but it varies for like, I want to say, $80,000 to $100,000.
That's already been, we already have one installed at Bridge and PA, though, right? We have a Greenlight Go there, Scott? You know?
Was that done, are you asking if that traffic signal was done with the?
Yeah, if it's a Greenlight Go. I believe it is.
I don't know if it was or not. That was before me.
Okay.
Yeah, and to my knowledge, I don't know that there was a Greenlight Go grant, you know, granted to the borough, but it could have been before my time.
It could have been Arlie, I'm not sure.
Say again?
It could have been Arlie or Greenlight Go.
If it isn't, shouldn't that be the first one that we do? Because that's right, the ambulance squad is right here. Like, when the squad comes out and goes on a call, like typically, that's the most.
You're talking about Pennsylvania and Tretin?
Pennsylvania and Bridge Street, right here by the, by the Dunkin' Donuts. Wouldn't?
I think that the Greenlight Go is a grant program.
Yes.
It's not a specific piece of equipment. I think what you're, are you thinking about a preemption where an ambulance will come up and get a green light automatically?
Well, yeah, I realize that it's not the actual fixture that goes on the pole, but the funding for the, shouldn't, if we have funding for a Greenlight Go fixture, wouldn't that be the first one that should get it? That's, that's the, that's the light that?
If that signal needs any other upgrades, then that.
Well, that was my original question. Has that signal been upgraded since 1950?
So one of the grants that we did apply for is just traffic signal upgrades, which includes, yeah, preemption and battery backups, generator plugs, that kind of stuff for all of the traffic signals. So we have a general grant that we've applied for to improve these traffic lights.
No, none of them have been done yet.
None of them have been done.
No, we haven't.
So the next time we have a power outage, there'll be a bucket with a stop sign cemented into it down there. Okay.
Hey, Scott, I had spoken with the fire department a few times. I believe the intersection you're talking about has a preemptive device. There's two that they would like to really see, and it wasn't that one, I don't believe was on the list.
I thought it might be, because when I, sometimes I come home from work and it's like 3:00 in the morning, and that light takes forever to turn if you're on Pennsylvania Avenue, and I've flashed my high beams real quick, and it's changed a couple of times. Now, I don't know if that's good luck, or if that's for me flashing my head beam, the high beams, but.
We'll go with good luck.
Okay.
So this year, we're looking at a couple of projects that we want to try to complete. So our first one is that Bridge Street Trail Link, and this is contingent on several reviews through PennDOT, so hopefully. So hopefully, we will close on some of these reviews this spring and hopefully start construction in the summer. Obviously, it's been a slow process, but we're, we've been getting closer, working with PEC, so.
Excuse me, I have.
They probably don't know what PEC is. PEC is Pennsylvania Environmental Council.
Yes.
And DVRPC has been involved, which is the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. There's a lot of inside baseball acronyms that get thrown around, so just to clarify.
And PEC actually helped us years ago with the study when it all got started. I have a question about the layout that you have for that particular project. I have two questions. One, it talks about the bump out. How big of a bump out is that where it comes up onto the street? Will that inhibit two lanes of traffic?
All of this is coordinated through PENDOT. So I haven't been the primary engineer on this project, and I don't have the design plans on me. I don't know if Kurt can weigh in.
So the, this rendering hasn't been updated since years ago.
Okay.
So this doesn't depict exactly what's on the permitted plans with PENDOT. But it absolutely will not impair two-way traffic. It'll still have sufficient car way for two-way traffic. As Alora said, it's ramps on either side to get up to that road level. And then, in order to allow for safe crossing, there's actually going to be a push-button traffic signal for pedestrians that can have flashing lights go off so motorists know somebody's going to cross the road.
Okay. Second question, will they be doing any reconstruction of the road right there? It's a, it's a real severe, bumpy area.
Just minimal paving to accommodate the construction.
That's not going to help.
But remember, Bridge Street is still scheduled for repaving this year, 2020, so. By PENDOT, yes.
And PENDOT's looked at the bridge. I mean, there was a lot of ideas to replace the bridge and do alternate designs to this. And, you know, ultimately, the bridge is in reasonably good shape. I mean, you know, Pennsylvania's 48th in the country for condition of bridges as the worst, you know, second, third from the bottom. But this bridge is in relatively good shape, so it's not ever scheduled in our lifetimes for replacement. And so, you know, this will be a good, safe solution. And the other thing that, that we all like about this concept is it gets people up to the street level. So when people are passing through, remember, this is going to be part of the East Coast Greenway Trail System that runs from Florida up to Maine. It makes it up to the Calhoun Street Bridge in Pennsylvania, coming out of Philly, and then jumps over to New Jersey, across the Calhoun Street Bridge. So when people are coming south or north, getting them off the DNL Trail for, or crossing, you know, staying on the DNL Trail, but getting up to the road level, it's an opportunity for people to take a little time out of their trip to go, you know, patronize some restaurants and some, some stores and things. So there's a little economic development opportunity in this concept too.
The, the area that's, I'm depicting as really bad is, it's actually not what the, it's not the bridge portion of the road, it's right before the bridge.
Approaches.
Yeah. There's a lot of potholes and dips and so forth.
Yeah.
Which they often say will slow down traffic, but not sure.
Well, we can coordinate with PENDOT when they're coming through if there's a way that they can adjust the grades on that with paving. And we'll certainly.
Thank you.
Work with them on that.
Do you, do you coordinate with PENDOT on a regular basis then?
On, on this, designing this project, absolutely.
But only on this project then? Like, what I'm getting at is if you coordinate with PENDOT, how about the Bridge Commission? Can, do you ever, do you ever work with them? Because I don't think, I'm not saying that they should do everything in town, but they, they have a substantial footprint in our Borough, and I don't think we really get much out of it. If anything, the wear and tear on, Nancy's talking about with the potholes, are people trying to avoid the toll that the Bridge Commission's charging.
Well, I think what you're referring to is, in the past, the Borough has had a substantial relationship with the Bridge Commission. I think that has diminished over the years as the priorities of the Bridge Commission and its leadership has changed. And now that they've moved most of their executive offices out of town, that will probably continue. And it's not just Morrisville. All of the host communities of the Bridge Commission have, have felt the same thing over the years. But we certainly interact with them on a pretty regular basis. But we're not going to get the generosity out of them we've seen in the past.
Any other questions on this Bridge Street project? So this is just a map showing actually some pavement history that both MMA and the Borough have completed in the past couple of years. And then, we're looking at this year for Legion Ave, Francis Ave, Althea Ave, Grandview and Melvin, depending on what bids come in at. And then, we also have 2021 that we're looking at in the future.
Quick question on that, right over here. So the way they're broken up, though, how is that going to affect pricing? You've got some small swatches of street away from the larger, bigger picture project. How do you think that's going to affect the pricing?
Majority of them are on that western side. There's just Legion, I think, is the outlier, but it's in pretty rough shape, so. I mean, grouping them together, I think, will help get pricing where we want it. But we have a deduct if pricing goes too high that we would take away one or two of those streets.
Thank you.
And how much money is in the budget for this?
Scott, do you know?
I got it yesterday. $198,000, I believe.
We have a total available for road paving of, between Liquid Fuels and the Streets Fund, of $198,230. This is from a document redistributed to council yesterday, from last fall. Based on the Borough engineers' estimate, we're projecting a shortfall of about $160,000. But again, that will depend on what the bid's coming at.
So we're looking at, again, stop signs, yield signs, replacement with Public Works. Looking at the levy accreditation phase two. I'm sorry, what was that?
Oh, I still want to talk about the paving, because I know that we don't have the money in the budget. So are we not going to pave the streets because of the shortfall?
Yes.
Okay.
We will drop whatever streets are necessary to meet the budget based on what funds we have available.
So for the levy accreditation phase two, we're working with sub consultants to help us assist with this H&amp;H study. Kim Dunn with T&amp;M Associates no longer can assist us. So she's kind of referenced us to a few others. So we're working on getting someone on board and then kind of moving forward with the study and design of anything that will be needed to accredit the levy. Williamson Park Master Plan. We'll be working together with the Borough in developing some type of plan concept for redevelopment of the park. And hopefully, we'll get that established within the next couple of months.
Just to clarify on that, when you say redevelopment of the park, you mean redevelopment of the park as a park, not redevelopment and the whole other $100 million project?
Right.
We had to come in and propose.
Yeah, completely different issues.
Yes. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, developing the master plan for Williamson Park, it's a planning grant. So what you're going to end up with at the end of the day is like the concept plan at the back of the room there that we have for Patriots Park. And at some point, we'll ask the council president to form a committee of council to be involved and review that process in developing the final master plan, as we did with Patriots Park.
Constructing Melvin Ave Basin. Hopefully, we get the additional funding from one of the two grants that we've applied for. It's really just ready to go, and we can put it out to bid again. So hopefully, we get positive results.
Alora, do we know about how long we have left on the existing grant, the 185, before it has to be refunded?
I believe it is 2021.
Okay.
Or 2022.
Beginning or end, do you know?
It will be like either June or end.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know the exact date off the top of my head, but I know we have some.
Yeah, if we have active.
We could probably ask for an extension as well.
We could probably get an extension.
Excellent, thank you.
I have a question, please. What, what is the, the square, I was going to say square footage of that basin? It's very, I mean, it's quite large.
It's under an acre. I don't know the exact square footage, but it is just under an acre.
Oh, thank you.
Alora, can I ask you a technical question on that one?
Sure.
I know a while back when we first discussed it, it was mentioned that the entire project as a whole may be able to get us credit in the future as well, because it would be above and beyond what we needed. Did we ever get an answer to whether they would apply future credits to that?
So Sam Brinker's kind of our expert in this field. But I do recall talking with her that it would be, I think, double amount or like 12. There's certain credits for like your reduction of pluses.
The reason why it's a hard question to answer is because we're not quite sure DEP can answer that question for themselves. This program.
Or in advance.
Yeah.
If we had a final product to show them, it might, would be a little easier to get an answer out of them, if that's possible.
Yeah, the, the targets that they set up to, to have us try and meet, they tell us whether we meet them or not. But when you quiz them on, you know, what they're, how they quantify this, some of the, it lacks a little bit of science behind it. And sometimes the targets move. But as Alora said, Samantha Brinker's very good at, at staying ahead of them at least one step. And the, the thing is, we can't retrofit half a basin. So we're doing the whole basin anyways, and we're fortunate to have that project. Other municipalities, especially small boroughs, can't, within their limits, even find a suitable project. For instance, Pendel Borough is a, is a good one. You look at their footprint, and they, they may have to go to their neighboring municipalities and try to partner up, which we've done as well for Morrisville. But, you know, we, we were able to get this project scoped, and we were able to get a permit very early compared to our, you know, neighboring, competing municipalities. And the fact that we're sitting here with the $185,000 in hand, with a shovel-ready project that we still have four years to complete, is, is really putting us in a great spot. Because it gives us that time now to keep pursuing the supplemental funding from the shortfall. It's hard to believe it takes a quarter million dollars to hog out soil from the bottom of a basin that's less than an acre large. But it's a challenging project, it's wet soils. And when you do low-bid work, public bid work, contractors got to buy the risk upfront. So their number reflects that.
And just to clarify, when he says four years to complete, he's talking MS four years, not grant years, okay?
And also to clarify, I think, when you talk about risk, because you and I spoke about this, we know that the Borough already had a, a, a large piece of machinery stuck in there. So that's the kind of risk that the, that the vendor would take on is, am I going to get stuck in there? What's going to cost me to pull this thing out of there?
Yeah, so, and just kind of, kind of to continue to make the point here, having the time left on the clock, there's many municipalities that'll be facing that five-year time clock. They won't have projects approved, they won't have time. It takes a year to get a grant, to apply for it, and to go through the cycle, and then to get the agreement at the end. So there's going to be a lot of people scrambling at the end of this permit cycle, just hemorrhaging, you know, big money out the door to meet these unfunded mandates from, unless the legislators change the rules and money starts flowing from the state down. But right now, these grants are our best option. And so we're trying to stay ahead of all of this to keep the financial impact to the Borough as minimal as possible.
So this next project is looking at the DCED grant that the Borough won the $100,000 for constructing ADA ramps.
Alora, I just want to make a comment on that. When Scott had asked about the cost of the ADA ramps and them being so expensive, I think one of the reasons why is people don't realize, 10, 15 years ago, an ADA ramp used to be just a curb ramp with a delineator slapped on it. Now, it's got to be engineered, there's curbs that need to be put in. There's distances that they have to have for slopes that are greater than they used to be. And it's, if you go walk around Summer Seat in Patriots Park, you can see that, you know, sidewalks that used to be straight now have curves and bends and everything to meet this. And it's a much more challenging case nowadays.
Looking at the replacement of Morrisville Library Roof, contingent on getting additional funding from CDBG. And that is everything. Do you guys have any other questions?
What is the probability of getting funding for that roof, for the library?
Pretty high. I, I did have a discussion with one of the representatives with CDBG last fall, and she said that was a good project since the Borough already has a grant that they can match.
Usually, when there's grant funding in place from another source and you're looking to stack a new grant with it in order to complete a project that's ready to go, that tends to tick up towards the top of the priority list, so.
Yeah, CDBG funding on the county's end, they collect the money and then they disperse it out to municipalities. But there's an unbelievable timeliness that they have to spend that money. So having these projects teed up and ready to go, having other grant money in hand that we can apply for and show that, it really puts us at a, an advantage in competing for that money. Because if they give money to a municipality and municipality has an idea that they want to go do something, but that's about as much thought as they've given it so far, they could give that money out. And if it doesn't get spent in a certain amount of time, it hurts the county in whole from either getting the same amount of money in the following years, or they, they, they get a temporary penalty, they don't, you know. So they want to get the money in and out and built so that the county can keep going in year after year to get funding. And Marshall's in a great spot too. I mean, the commissioners, the, the, there's new members up there, but I would still think Marshall's going to be a, a town that this money is hopefully going to get reinvested back into.
I think we've demonstrated our ability to complete projects successfully.
And that goes across the board. I mean, you go out to Harrisburg, it's no different. These DCED grants, the PENDOT grants, they, you, you can just get in the grant. It's not just filling out the application. Alora doesn't, you know, brag a lot about herself. I like bragging about her. But knowing the inside information on what goes into these grants, the timing of it, whether this grant can match against that grant, it's incredible how much effort has to occur for all these dominoes to fall in place like, like they have been. So we're very proud of being able to present to you tonight. We're proud of Alora's work. We hope, you know, that you're all proud of it as well.
There, are there additional monies available for the library with this CBG? Like, I know, I think the windows need some help at the library.
We can look into it. The Keystone Grant, maybe.
Yeah, that could be a Keystone Grant after we close out this one.
Anybody else?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is Five Public Comment. Let me raise hand up.
Andrew Lubin, if you're still here. Oh, there he is.
You have three minutes after you state your name and address. And I'm going to ask that in the future, we're going to have rules of decorum for our meetings. And we're not going to allow public comment to sing along to any council member nor council members directly address the resident. If they ask a question, it's asked to the body. And if you happen to have an answer, you can ask the chair to answer it. Or if the borough manager has an answer, he'll answer it. If not, then our answer will be, we'll look into it and get back to you. With that said, it's all yours.
Good, thank you very much. This does come out?
Yes.
Great, there we go. I'm Andrew Lubin. I live at 624 Crown Street, next to the infamous Nebule Hookah Bar, which we're going to discuss tonight, to no surprise, Mr. Parker, correct? Good, thank you. Sorry, I called you out by name.
That's all right.
Good. Since I spoke two weeks ago.
I can't really hear you. Is the mic on?
I'm hoping so. Is this better?
Just, yeah.
Since I spoke, since I spoke two weeks ago, I've had to call the police department twice because of the noise problems from there. The first time was only two days after the meeting on the Thursday night. And I don't call, you know, 11:05 or 11:06 because we're all young knuckleheads making noise at one time. I'm calling 1 o'clock, 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning. Clearly, on a work night, that's wrong. So let me work on my phrasing on this, as per I've been warned. Mr. Borough Manager, I have a question for you, sir. I understand that the code enforcement, you've been requested to send the code enforcement people out to investigate the noise, the occupancy, and the parking situation. Can you address that?
Yes, we have been looking at various issues there from noise to capacity to parking. Yes.
But nothing, it continues every week as we continue to, as people continue to call.
Yes, we get copies of your police reports. We've met with the owners of the establishment. The citations have been issued against them and we're waiting for a court hearing. We are, the code department is doing everything the code department can do to bring them into compliance.
Great, then thank you. One more question. I understand also the fire chief went out several months ago to add certain additions, whatever, whatever things he wanted done. Have they, has he been back to see whether that, the work has been done?
I'm sorry, can you say the first part again?
Yes, I understand the fire chief went out to Nebule Hookah Bar eight or nine months ago, inspected it and wanted certain additions or corrections made. Have the, have those additions, corrections been made? Has he been back?
I believe you're referring to the fire marshal.
Fire marshal, sorry.
Yes, he's been there several times. His requests have been dealt with by the owner, but one of the citations that has been issued was by the fire marshal. So we'll be addressing those when the court hearing gets scheduled.
Great, then I appreciate your time. Appreciate the, your answers. I'll be back in two more weeks. Thank you again.
Okay. Well, actually, we meet, we meet next week. We don't meet in two weeks.
Next week, I'll be back.
Oh, okay.
Didn't bring my calendar, I just brought my notes.
Yeah, Tuesday night is the meeting.
See you then, thank you.
But Monday's a holiday.
I just wanted to add something. I mean, we all apologize for the situation that the residents in the area are dealing with. It's being worked on, you know, there, the legal process is slow. We just can't go in and close the place down. The citations have been issued. All we can ask is that you get, you know, that you give it the opportunity to go through the court system.
Mr. Parker, I do, and I appreciate, and I apologize, I probably came out a little stronger than you a couple of weeks ago.
Perfect. If I had that issue next to me, I would feel the same way.
You see, the weekend before that, I had some of their clients in the parking lot right next to me. So my office window is here. I had people effectively three chairs over. That's getting too close to home. And that's, this isn't some theoretical thing in the parking lot, two doors, two blocks down. This is right there. So I take it more personal than most. Okay, thank you.
We're working on it. We're doing, we're doing everything we can.
Is there anybody else?
No, that was it. One person.
Is there anybody else in the public who wishes to speak at this time? We're going to close out public comment then. We're going to move on to six, which is approval of the minutes next week. Six A is the Borough Council regular meeting of 11/18/19. Six B is the biannual reorganization meeting of 1/6/2020. Six C would be the Borough Council agenda meeting of 1/14/2020. And six D is the Borough Council regular meeting of 1/21/2020. I accept everybody review the minutes that were in the Dropbox and if you have any changes to get them in as soon as possible.
We believe you're going to see the 1/21 minutes this week. If that's not sufficient time for council to review, we can always bump the 1/21 to the March meeting.
All right, seven. Seven A, next week we'll have the treasurer's report. And seven B will be a motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills. Then eight, eight A, the mayor's report. Eight B will be the police chief's report. And eight C will be the junior councilperson's report. And then we'll, next week, move on to action items under nine. Nine A would be a call for a motion authorizing the borough engineer to solicit bids for the 2020 road repaving project. Anybody have anything they want to add on that? Nine B would be a call for a motion to approve the Morrisville Business Association sponsored car show to be held on Saturday, May 16th, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM on each East Bridge Street between Delmore and Pennsylvania avenues. Does anybody have any questions about that? Because we have a representative from the Morrisville Business Association who is willing to answer questions. And seven C will be a call for a motion to approve the New York City Runs Trenton Half Marathon to be held on Saturday, May 8th, from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM. Pending Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Special Events Permit Approval. Anybody have anything to say on that?
Do we get any revenue from that? I mean, it went from being the Trenton Half Marathon to now the New York City Runs Morrisville?
No, no, no. It is the Trenton Half Marathon. It's being coordinated by a company called New York City Runs where all they do is major special events and runs of this nature.
Is this an, I'm sorry.
So there's no permit fees or anything associated with closing down, I guess it would be Bridge Street, although there's probably the Bridge Commission's property there.
They're going to have to coordinate that with all the jurisdictions, including the police, and reimburse for whatever costs they cause us to incur. But no, there's no permit fee for the PennDOT permit because it's state highway.
How about just for operating in Morrisville Borough?
No.
Is this an additional half marathon? Is it the Trenton Half Marathon normally in November?
I think it's actually been a couple of years since they came over the bridge. So they've kind of brought that component back.
But that race, that race was always in, was it?
I'm not sure when they used to do it, but.
That was always in November, wasn't it?
This is the same, it's the same one.
So they moved it from November to May then?
Probably, yeah.
Anybody else? Okay. Nine D would be a call for a motion to approve the East Coast Greenway Ride to be held on Sunday, May 17th, from 8:45 AM to 10:45 AM with a rest stop in Williamson Park pending certificate of insurance. Anybody?
Mr. Parker, what does that include? Does that mean they're having a very, a large rally in the park?
No, it's just a, this is a bicycle race, and excuse me, not a race, a bicycle ride.
Right.
And they just want to have a spot to stop and have a break and use facilities along the trail.
Okay.
Is there any permit, I'm sorry, Nancy?
You think they'll be on the canal trail versus the streets?
I think they'll probably end up on both.
Okay.
Is there any permits involved in this?
There is.
Okay.
So we've got paperwork and certificate of insurance for their use of Williamson Park, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Do we have a ballpark number of bicyclists in this thing? It's a Saturday morning or a Sunday morning if there's like baseball games going on or something and like 5,000 bicycles show up in the park? It's going to be a.
We are coordinating with Morrisville Little League with their schedule on that, so I don't think there will be any conflict.
Does Greenway know how many bikes there's going to be?
All we have is estimates, and I don't have that off the top of my head, but they did give us a projection of how many people they'd have signed up.
Okay, there's nobody else? All right, we have an appointment that could be made. There's a letter of interest that came in for the Environmental Advisory Council. It's for a one, three-year appointment to expire on December 19th, 2022.
Yeah, remember, this was up previously, but there was only one applicant for two positions and you've subsequently received another application, so.
It's in the Dropbox, so.
Yes.
All right. Ten, does anybody have any unfinished business? Or does the borough have any unfinished business? Eleven, new business. Anybody have any new business?
I have a couple, Mr. President. The, when I was door knocking back in the spring and in the fall, the residents on Park Avenue, which is the street, Park and Central, down by the Trenton Makes Bridge, several of the residents on Park Avenue were complaining about the noise, the garbage, and just the, their diminished quality of life, especially in the summertime. I don't know how to fix the problem. I mean, we can't put a police officer down there for 24 hours. We, I don't know how to fix it. I have a suggestion, but Mr. Flagler, maybe if, I don't know if it would work, no parking signs or resident-only parking signs from April to November, dawn to dusk. Something similar with what they have at the high school. You can't park on the street next to the high school during school hours during the school year. A resident parking only on the west side of the street, no parking after dusk on the east side of the street. At least four neighbors, I can, my neighbors that live on that street, Mary and Jean, if you're watching on TV, Steve and Jesse, one of those that I just named had to move their bedroom to the back of their house from the noise and just the disturbance of what goes on out there. And I've seen people, I've heard from people complaining about this. And it, this doesn't, this, this is, this can be fixed. But as far as Mr. Flagler with the legality of putting no parking signs up, and I realize that this is an area that we want to attract people to, and putting up no parking signs is going to discourage them from coming. I get that angle. But cars pulling up at 2:00 in the morning when the bars close and going up on top of the dike and throwing their food wrappers out, their empty liquor bottles, having sex in the car, having sex up on the dike, it happens down there in the summertime. And the neighbors are fed up with it.
You're right, it's not a new issue.
Yeah.
It only got worse once we put benches up there. But I don't, I don't have the answer.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, I mean, it looks like there's a couple of things that could be addressed. It could be maybe some added patrols in the area.
My experience, signs only work if there's enforcement.
Right.
And if there's already an issue and people are calling it in, the enforcement should already be there to some extent.
I'm sure it's something that maybe the mayor and the police chief could look into and see if there's been an uptick in complaints during the summertime, but I'm sure we can follow up on this.
So I could hardly hear what you said.
I said, it's probably something that the police chief and the mayor can look into to see, you know, there's been an uptick of complaints. And if not, then maybe some surprise.
Well, there may, there may not even be an uptick of complaints because when you have a situation like this, people get tired of complaining and they just stop complaining. That doesn't mean the problem went away. And if there's a car down there and there's people that are eating their food or drinking their liquor bottles and whatnot and throwing it on the ground, and they're there for a half an hour and someone calls 911 or calls the non-emergency number and calls the police 20 minutes after the person leaves, okay, the cop's not picking the garbage up, the cop's not going to see the person that was there, and then that leave, that's up to the neighbor to go out and pick up the bottles. And they're the bottles that land on the grass that didn't land on the street and are broken now. Whether they got broken when they hit the street or if they were laying in the street and someone drove over them. But it's, it's, this has been going on for lord knows how long. At least 35 years, because I used to walk up there on the levee when I was 14 and 15 years old at 1:00 in the morning, and I shouldn't have been there. So it's been going on at least that long.
Well, if I may, I can add that there's a few hotspots or trouble spots, whatever you wish to call them, that the chief definitely gives directives to the officers to make extra patrols. That is one of them. Like I said, there's four that I could think of due to, not really calls in, like you were saying, but, but we get called personally. People will discuss this with me and George. And in fact, there's times that he puts it that he wants the officers to make notations on their logs, that we do do these extra patrols. So it sounds great, but don't count on that to be your one catchall to solve the problem because we're already doing what you suggested. Thanks.
No disrespect to you or the chief. I understand, but whatever we've been doing, it isn't working. It's not working. The same old solution with the, we'll get together, we'll talk about it, it has, it's not working. The people down there are fed up. Second thing I have is Summer Seat. I had a neighbor call me last week that the, the street light was out. He wanted me to see if I could put more streetlights up on the street. I said, no, we'll fix the one that's there. But we were talking for a little while, and then he asked me, have you ever been inside that building across the street from my house? And I said a couple times. And he said, I've lived here for about 10 years. I've never been in there. I don't know how to get in there. I saw people going in there one time and I went over and they were inside, but they locked the door behind them when they went in and I couldn't get in. We, you can't talk to someone that loves this town without them mentioning Summer Seat, right? It's on the side of our police cars. It's probably, it's not on our borough, borough letterhead now. It used to be. And I couldn't answer his question. If, Scott, ask me how I could get into Summer Seat. When can I view it? When can I see it? What goes on there? You know what I'm going to tell you? I don't know.
First Saturday of the month.
The first Saturday of the month.
Yep. That's, that's it.
That's it.
That's it, yeah. What hours? I think it's 10 to 2. I'm not positive.
Sounds right.
Thank you, Nancy. I will tell him to walk over on a Saturday, the first Saturday of the month.
They do have a Facebook page where they post events and hours.
Say again?
They have a Facebook page where they post events and hours.
If the door was shut, it was probably because they rented out to private, you know, private parties.
Well, that's what he asked me. He said he, he said he wanted to have a birthday party there for his wife. His wife turned whatever, milestone birthday. And he was interested in renting it out. And he had no idea how to go about renting it out.
Google, just Google Summer Seat.
It's a well-kept secret and a hidden gem.
Well, just an FYI, Summer Seat is having a George Washington tea this Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00.
How convenient, I will let him know.
Yep. And to speak to the question of the lighting, as part of the conceptual plan for Patriots Park, there is a consideration being given to perimeter lighting around the square block as well as internal lighting throughout the park on the walking paths, so.
I told him that there, there would be some additional lighting with the Summer Seat because his original complained to me about the streetlights were. because his original complaint to me about the streetlights were because of, you find this hard to believe, drug deals in front of his house on Legion Avenue. And I drove coming home from work that day, I talked to him on the phone that day, I drove home that morning when I got home at 3:00 in the morning, and I drove up Legion and it was pitch black, the street. He said that there was a storm a couple of years ago and this, and that, all the damage, and they never replaced the light.
Is the light still out or?
No, I called John and John went out and they fixed it the following day.
Okay.
So the light works, and I talked to John about it, and I basically relayed to this gentleman that streetlights are for lighting the street, not your yard, not your house, not your driveway. His neighbor was a, was a, had his work vehicle broken into a few weeks ago and had a bunch of tools taken out of it. So between the drug deals on the street and the neighbors getting their cars broken into and their work trucks, he wanted a little bit more light. But the streetlight works now.
Scott, just to let you know, nobody ever likes to hear this option, but you can, they can contact PICO and they can purchase their own streetlight and get an electric meter and put it up because my neighbor had done that years ago.
I worked at UPS with him, he did his own light, I know. How much did that cost him?
Speaking of light, excuse me, I'm sorry. Speaking of lights.
How much to put the light up?
This, I'm sorry, is Mr. Robinson done?
Say again?
Are you done?
Yes.
I didn't, okay. There's one place which I would love to see a light someday, and it's not going to be, I know we're not going to be able to dig down and make it electrical, but maybe we can have a solar light there, and that's at Bridge and Barnsley. It's, it's like one of the darkest intersections and also one of the, I'm going to say not overly dangerous, but you're coming off a bridge, I mean, you're coming off of Route 1, and of course, there's activity at the Elks, and there's lots of, there's traffic there, and it's, it's, it's.
Actually, I thought there was a streetlight there, John, no?
No.
Maybe Althea I'm thinking of?
It's ones at Francis and one at Althea, but nothing in between. And it's always been very dark. I know we talked about it when we actually did the former street lighting project, but there was nothing there to, you know, to attach it. But maybe even just a.
Yeah, we'll have to look and see if there's a utility pole near the intersection there somewhere. That might be the problem because we would have nothing to attach it to.
Okay.
Just a thought. Who puts up the utility pole? PICO? So we would have to contact PICO if they wanted to do that?
12, which is borough officials, which would be where we would discuss.
Just do that.
Yes, so, just for future reference, new business would be for anything that anybody wants to add to the agenda for, you know.
Do you think there'll be new business once we leave our, we'll know that later, I guess, once we leave our exec session?
Just going to ask that question.
I don't think there will be.
So we can adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so.
And we're not adjourning?
We are.
Or we are?
We are. So 11 was 12 and 12 was 11, and we're at 13 unless anybody else has anything else.
Are we doing announcements? Can I do real quick? Okay, a couple, I got just a couple items. One is I want to remind everybody about April 11th at 11:00 AM for the Morrisville Borough Easter Egg Hunt sponsored by the Morrisville Yardly Rotary Club. It's always a great event. It brings out hundreds and hundreds of families. Come on out, bring your kids, kids under 10 can all be involved in the egg hunt itself. There's no charge to be involved in the egg hunt. All supplies are donated by people and businesses in the town. I do have a question for our borough manager, Scott. Any update since we're talking about streetlights on the light on Melvin Avenue?
The light on Melvin Avenue, that's the one the electrician's having to do for us, right, John? Yeah, so that's on our list.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure it wasn't falling off. The other thing I wanted to ask, and I did send an email, I got your response, Scott, but I just want to know from anyone else that's sitting on the dais, the COPS grant. We have a memo stating that it's, it's the understanding that the schools are going to be covering the match. However, I haven't seen anything in writing from any schools. I'm just wondering if anybody else has any information of where the matches will be coming from for the COPS grant.
You want to address that, Ted?
At the joint meeting between the school district and borough, there was some discussion about that, and there, if I remember it right, and forgive me if I don't have it all 100% right, there was some purchases that the district had done after October 1st, which would be when invoices would be able to be recognized under the grant that could be applied towards any future purchases or acquisitions under the grant they want to. So there would be no matching grant on their part. And then I believe if I understood right from Darletta that the Holy Trinity School understands that anything that they wish to acquire under the grant, they would be responsible for the 25% match. I do believe there has to be further discussion by the school board as to what they want to do, but that's pretty much it.
So two quick questions on that. One, are they going to be willing to put anything in writing? Because when it comes to contracts, what you have in writing is, is the law.
Absolutely, and then there's also going to be a memorandum of understanding or agreement with them that the next time any grants that include the school district in them, that they are given the opportunity to review the grant and decide whether or not they wanted to be involved.
Great. And the other question I would have is as far as applying purchases prior to council approving the grant, how is that going to align?
No, it's not before. Well, it was, it was after the grant was awarded.
Yeah, but it was, it was signed off on by an author, but it wasn't, it wasn't signed off by the proper authority until last month. So are they going to have any issues issuing something prior to the official approval and acceptance of that grant?
I believe the, that Darletta, who is the representative for the grant, has to have further discussions with the DOJ on that, but first conversations, I believe that they felt that it was what they had already purchased could be applied towards any future, as a match towards any future purchases. And also, the district understands that they have the potential to acquire additional security, things that they may have been looking at doing this year, and simply have to pay the 25% match.
Yeah, anything we can get in writing would be fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Go ahead.
Two other things I'd like to mention that was discussed. They don't really know what the match is because they don't know what kind of monies they're going to spend yet because there's an assessment being done, a safety assessment being done at all those locations. So they believe it will involve locks, doors, cameras.
Right.
Lights. So once they find out what that total is, then they'll know what their.
Just one thing, it's only a match on invoiced items to the, to the DOJ. It's not, it's not a blanket match of the amount of the grant. We don't have to use, the district.
They may not use the whole amount.
Right, they may not.
Use whatever you need to use, that's it.
Right. So there's a 25% match only on invoices that are sent to the DOJ.
And we were also told that the, one of the reasons it went through the police department, which I think was explained that evening, is because it comes through the Department of Justice, which is always through our police department. And they were actually, the chief and the mayor were listed as signers through the Department of Justice, so that's, but in the future, you know, to just keep us posted is certainly a much better avenue to take.
Thanks. However, if you read the grant itself, it states that school districts could apply for it. They have the authority to apply for it as well. It doesn't have to be the borough or the police department.
It doesn't have to be, but since the borough had already had a relationship with the DOJ and prior COPS grants, the grant writer felt that we had, that the districts had the best chance to get a, get the grant approved if it was through the police department because the police department's jurisdiction covers both the school district and Holy Trinity, where if the school district did it, it would only be for the district, and if Holy Trinity did it, it would only be for Holy Trinity. That's through her conversations with the Department of Justice.
Still done by folks that were not authorized, though, right?
It is what it is.
I also think, I could be wrong, Ted, didn't Darletta say that they would not incur any expenses until it was approved by an entity as to who would be paying for it?
Right. I believe it's, it's gone to the point where if the district as well is in need of items that was already in their budget, that they would look, they would look to see whether or not they wanted to do them now, and if they had the money in the budget, that they would be able to get, just throwing it out there, $25,000 worth of equipment that they were scheduled to buy, but only end up paying 25% of it and being able to save 75% of the cost of the equipment. But that's all up to the school district and Holy Trinity as to what they, they think they would want to purchase under the grant and provided they had the matching portion of it, or whatever they wanted to purchase.
Ted?
I think what Mike was alluding to was that it doesn't matter about how much they're going to be spending, it's that we need something in writing saying that any matching funds will be coming from them. That's what we need, something in writing saying they will cover all the matching funds.
Well, right now, it stands that the school board and Holy Trinity have to, well, more the school board because there's a board, has to make a decision as to whether or not they want to purchase anything else and apply the credit that they've already, that they built up. So, yeah, as far as purchasing, that's a simple phone call to Darletta and tell her that nothing can be invoiced until there's an agreement between the, between all the parties.
I think, I think at the meeting, though, she did.
Yes.
She absolutely was firm about that.
I don't think Darletta would be, right, have any objection to.
Nobody's moving forward. And as far as the borough goes, the chief said, I'm under the impression that we are not buying anything, we are not buying any equipment, so there is, that's where there's no match involved for the borough. Because the police department's not buying equipment.
But the point is, the borough is on the hook for that.
Correct.
And that's, I think, why Ms. Dreisbach and Mr. Yeager are correct in saying that we should nail that down because even though it's up to the school, if the school district wants to draw down, they know they have a 25% match, which they can use for, apply previously paid-for items, but as the school district pointed out to us, they want to, if they have an opportunity to apply for the grant, they can apply for the grant, and they don't want to be obligated to pay for a match without knowing about it ahead of time.
Right.
So I think, I think there's a lesson to be learned here is that everybody should be notified before these applications are sent in, and we can find, we can make sure we have the proper signatories, and we can make sure that the entities that are going to be on the hook for any kind of match obligation know about it, have time, and can make the decision rather than doing it retroactively, and I think that's a valid point. Absolutely.
Ted, I have one more thing. Can we add a motion for next week to talk about if we can change the date of the council meeting from a Monday to either a Wednesday or Thursday?
How do we handle that? It wouldn't be a.
If there's a, if there's a consensus among council to add it to the agenda, we can add it to the agenda.
We always add everything that, we normally would add what someone asks, and then you just, gets voted up or down. I just think there's an awful lot to move. We have a schedule. I mean, we would have to re-advertise, which is not, I don't think that's, I don't even think re-advertising would be the issue or the cost of that. I think the, I think the issue would be the rearranging, but.
Yeah, people's availability.
There's other meetings going on. Committee meetings.
Do you want to, do you want a motion added, or do you want to give it a little bit more time to discuss and see what would have to be moved? I mean, we'd have to come up with a firmer date, like it's a Monday or, well, a Thursday or whatever. I don't, I'm sorry, forgive me, I don't, I didn't hear the other day you said.
Said Wednesday and.
Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday.
Wednesday or Thursday. Actually, weren't one of those bad for you?
Well, Thursdays, there seem to be lots of board meetings around here.
I can't on Thursdays.
I mean, I know there are some committee meetings that fall on Wednesday. There's actually two of them tomorrow. There's the REC Board and the MEAC. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts to it. I mean, I'm not staunchly saying no, but there's a lot of moving parts, and I think, I think maybe look at the calendar and then see if we have a better, one of those two days that may work, and then come back and then maybe talk about it again.
That's fine. Is there?
Sorry, give me one, one second. There's also the option of one meeting a month, which would be easier to move than having the agenda, which tags along that, that date by the, you know, by the resolution we did, we did to create the agenda, the special meeting to set the agenda. They have a timeframe in which they have to precede the council meeting, so that has to move as well, or we'd have to redo that. But there's the option of reducing it down to one meeting in the not-too-distant future if everybody gets comfortable with it.
Yeah.
And that would, that would kind of make moving stuff around a little bit more easier, but that's something else to think about.
Okay. I'm comfortable.
Is there a specific reason why it needs to be changed?
Just due to schedules, Monday's normally a hectic day. It's just easier to get.
Always been Monday. I mean, as long as I can remember, I've been coming here for over 30 years and it's always been Monday.
Change is good.
It's a meeting. Change the day after.
All right, let's, let's not add anything more to it. We don't, we don't need that. Let's, let's stay professional. We have been all night.
If you need a motion to adjourn, I'll make that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys need a quick break before executive session? Okay. Hey, Mike, when you go downstairs, can you ask the Obermeyer guys to come up, please? Are they outside here? Okay.
Who's outside?